Good evening. Today is Monday, April the 11th, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education, Business Meeting, and Adoption of Proposed 2016 and 17 Budget. I call this meeting to order. We will be presenting the colors. The AFJROTC cadets from Northwest Cabarrus High School will be presenting our colors, and our National Anthem will be performed by Chance Behringer, who is also a student at Northwest Cabarrus. Please stand with me. Right face. Hold on. Maybe see it. Our JR- the JROTC unit from Northwest Cabarrus High School was composed of Captain Cadet DeMarco Bronikowski, First Lieutenant Katie Haas, Second Lieutenant Mason Robinson, Second Lieutenant Amy Zavala, and Airman First Class Bianca Soto. The cadets are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin, U.S. Air Force retired, and Sergeant Corinne- Corinne Smith of the U.S. Air Force, also retired. As I said earlier, our National Anthem, performed brilliantly by Chance Behringer, a student at Northwest High School. Board members, we're now at setting the agenda. I need a motion to set the agenda.
(Motion) Motion.
Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Mr. Walter seconds that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
One opposed. Mr. Powell opposed. Okay. Now we're going to recognitions. The Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, Dr. Chris Louder, Mr. Tim Vaughn, if y'all come to the podium, and Ms. Glenda Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. As always, it is my pleasure to present our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for providing us with this opportunity to recognize and celebrate outstanding teachers in our district, and we are grateful for the longstanding partnership we have with Hillbush Ford. The Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April is Frank LaRoche. Mr. LaRoche, would you, your family, and any members of your school administrative team that are here with you tonight, please come forward. Frank LaRoche is a 7th grade science teacher at J.N. Freeze Magnet School. He was nominated for this month's award by a student and parent whose nominations addressed his approachable demeanor and his ability to make science fun and engaging. The student wrote, "Mr. LaRoche should be nominated for this award because he makes science fun, engaging, and interesting. He interacts with all of the students, and the teachers and staff love him for his kind and funny spirit." The parent wrote, "I have a daughter in his class, and she and all her friends like him. Through his class, they have found a role model who lets them see that being a hip, happening teacher who is in-"[404.68][404.68](Laughter) I enjoyed reading this earlier. "-who is intelligent and respectful is possible." The parent continued, "My daughter recently said, 'Mr. LaRoche's classroom is a safe and nurturing environment. I can ask questions, and he will help me learn as much about the answer as I want to.'" Mr. LaRoche, thank you for being a positive role model for your students and for sharing your affable demeanor with your students and colleagues at J.N. Freeze Magnet School. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to call you one of our own, and we'd like for Dr. Louder and Mr. Vaughn to present you with this award. And then the board to congratulate you as you go through.
Is that a science project?
(Laughter) All right.[454.11][454.11](Applause)
Before we present the Impact Through Education Awards, Ms. Ronnie Boone will be making her way to the podium. I'd like to recognize Deputy Alicia Mason, our SRO from Hickory Ridge Middle School. She'll be here helping us tonight. Thank you a lot, Alicia, for your attendance here. All right, Ms. Boone?
Oops, sorry.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Cox Mill Elementary School and at Northwest Cabarrus High School. The Impact Awards have been made possible by the generosity of our friends at BB&amp;T, so we want to thank them for allowing us the opportunity to recognize our students and staff members this school year. Our first Impact Awards will honor Cox Mill Elementary students and staff. Would any members of the Cox Mill Elementary Administrative Team please come forward at this time? Our first honoree from Cox Mill Elementary this evening is Shay Kilmurray. Would Shay and her family please come forward? Shay, why don't you stand in the middle of everybody? Yeah, there you go. Shay Kilmurray is a 5th grade student at Cox Mill Elementary School. She is a stellar student and all-around good person. She is very quiet, but is always aware of what is going on around her and willing to give a helping hand to a friend. Shay is helpful and is quick to offer a kind and caring smile. She is highly insightful when contributing to class discussions, and is passionate and has an extremely strong work ethic in all that she does, whether it's in school in the classroom or out on the playground. Shay has made a strong impact on Cox Mill Elementary during her years there. Her smile lights the hallways. Her Cox Mill family wishes her well as she moves on to the next phase of her journey. Congratulations Shay, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School.[638.07][638.07](Applause) Our next honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School is Harrison Liederman. Would Harrison and his family please come forward? Harrison Liederman, or Harry, as he is known at Cox Mill Elementary School, has touched the lives of friends and adults since he started kindergarten. Harry is an excellent 5th grade student and role model in his class and in the school. He is part of the CMTV Club, providing news and announcements on the daily broadcasts. Harry has been a care team member, serving Cox Mill- serving the Cox Mill community in various ways. He gets along with everyone and makes others feel welcome. He has a great work ethic and is involved in his community through both sports and scouting. He's a very well-rounded young man. Cox Mill staff will enjoy watching Harry continue to do great things, but they will definitely miss seeing his sweet smile every day. Congratulations, Harry. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School.[752.72][752.72](Applause) Our next Cox Mill Elementary honoree is Ms. Leslie McMillan. Would Ms. McMillan and her family please come forward? The Cox Mill community received a great gift last year when Leslie McMillan returned to Cabarrus County Schools and joined the Cox Mill staff as the AIG teacher. Words cannot fully express the impact that Leslie McMillan has had on those around her on a daily basis, and the most amazing thing is she has no idea how truly wonderful she is. To her, it is all in a day's job, or in what you do as a good person. Mrs. McMillan is so much more than a good person, she is a great asset to all. She is willing to fill any need that is seen at the school. Her creativity and positivity are contagious. Mrs. McMillan takes time to get to know all of her students and their families personally, and makes connections to their interest in the classroom. Mrs. McMillan begins every day with a smile, and is still smiling at the end of the day as she calls car rider numbers. The teaching profession and Cox Mill Elementary are better because of Leslie McMillan. Congratulations, Mrs. McMillan, and thank you for making an Impact Through Education at Cox Mill Elementary School.[880.57][880.57](Applause) And our final honoree this evening from Cox Mill Elementary School is Mrs. Erin Laptos. Would Ms. Laptos and her family please come forward? Erin Laptos has joined the staff at Cox Mill Elementary officially this year as a teacher assistant, but she's been a wonderful part of the school for the last four years, serving in various roles, including substitute extraordinaire, interim kindergarten and 4th grade teacher, and parent volunteer. If it can be done, Mrs. Laptos has done it. She's a shining example for others in how to do things the right way. She's always doing small things for others that make life much better. She's caring and compassionate, while firm and consistent. Students and parents know that Mrs. Laptos is there for them with anything that they need, but she holds high expectations for them. One of Mrs. Laptos's duties is the morning car rider line, assisted by the student care team members. She's quick to greet all students with a smile and to welcome them by name. Mrs. Laptos is a positive role model for all members of the Cox Mill community. Congratulations, Mrs. Laptos, and thank you for making an impact at Cox Mill Elementary School.[1010.23][1010.23](Applause) And now we'll move on to our Impact Through Education recognitions for Northwest Cabarrus High School. I'd like to invite any members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High is Chance Behringer. Would Chance and his family please come forward? Chance Behringer is a 9th grader at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Although he's only a freshman, Chance has earned a reputation as superstudent. He exuberates kindness and compassion, and has rightfully earned respect from his peers, staff members, and administration. Chance has certainly made a positive impact around the school. As if singing the National Anthem at home basketball games, volunteering as the manager of the boys' basketball team, setting up for faculty luncheons, cleaning up after others in the hallways and cafeteria, or lending a hand in the office is not enough, he can also be found giving up his time to single-handedly put together and stuff 300 prom packets. Chance is undoubtedly an asset to Northwest Cabarrus. He is most deserving of this award for his optimistic attitude, willingness to help others, and for his unprompted acts of kindness throughout the school. Congratulations, Chance. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus High School.[1160.14][1160.14](Applause) Our next Northwest Cabarrus High School honoree is Hannah Wareham. Would Hannah and her family please come forward? Hannah has been an active member of Northwest Cabarrus High School throughout her four years there. There aren't many students who do not recognize her or the positive impact she has had on the school. Hannah is currently the student body president, and has been- and has been active in leadership and the Awesome Club throughout all four years at Northwest Cabarrus. She's been instrumental in making positive changes to the school this year through her role as student body president. She's been in charge of successful pep rallies, a great canned food drive, and has already made big plans for the carnival for this year to reward hard-working students. Hannah always has so many responsibilities on her plate, but gets them done quickly and efficiently. Through leadership class, she has met many times with school administration and has presented ideas in a very professional manner. As an Awesome Club officer, she is in charge of the remind texts and gets those out immediately. Each year, as a member of the Awesome Club, she's participated in Special Olympics with great enthusiasm and looks forward to helping Special Olympics- the Special Olympics athletes each year. Hannah has a great passion for helping others. She volunteers at the hospital, and even arranged for the Awesome Club to host a craft day at the Jeff Gordon Children's Hospital. Hannah is always kind to those around her and purposely- purposefully discourages others from making mean comments. Hannah Wareham has had a great impact on the quality of Northwest Cabarrus, and also helped create a welcoming environment at the school. School staff are certain that she will continue to exemplify what it means to be an outstanding Trojan and member of the community as she continues her schooling and also throughout her lifetime. Congratulations, Hannah. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus High School.[1341.11][1341.11](Applause) Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School is Mrs. Kelly Mavropolis. Would Mrs. Mavropolis and her family please come forward? C.S. Lewis quoted that integrity is doing the right thing even when no one is watching. This staff member has continued to live this motto in all of her work with Northwest Cabarrus students, whether that means making home visits to bring students to school, planning MTSS incentive events, or just having personal one-on-one conversations with students. She continues to exemplify the true dedication, love, and commitment it takes to impact students and their academic success. Staff members say she is worth her weight in gold. Thanks to her efforts, the school's dropout rate has continued to decrease, its discipline referrals have decreased, and her students would run through a wall to make her happy.[1458.01][1458.01](Laughter) Comments her students made about her were, "She has impacted me by helping me be successful at life and school. She is a great person and deserves this award. She impacts me by helping me to keep my grades up. She has never let me down and seems to always believe in me and believe in whatever- and believe that I can do whatever I want to do. She helps me by giving me good options to help me keep bringing my grades up more and more. Mrs. M. has helped me by making school more fun and helping me succeed in school and make my schooling a happier time." Congratulations, Mrs. Mavropolis. Thank you for making an Impact Through Education at Northwest Cabarrus High School.[1500.61][1500.61](Applause) And our final honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School this evening is Ms. Angie Taylor. Would Ms. Taylor and her family please come forward? They say that you never get a second chance to make a good first impression. That is so true in a school building where the first impression that a parent or visitor has is the person who greets them as they enter the front office. That initial greeting can set the tone- oops, I'm sorry.[1577.64][1577.64](Laughter) That initial greeting can set the tone for visitors, whether they are here for- there for a parent conference to pick up a sick child, or are not happy with something that has occurred at the school. That person must possess the personality to create a warm and welcoming environment through their words and actions. Northwest Cabarrus High School is fortunate to have such a person in Angie Taylor. She always greets visitors with a smile on her face and a "what can I do for you?" attitude. To say that she can multitask is an understatement. She can answer five incoming calls, put three on hold, call a teacher on the intercom, and make copies of the bus survey form all at the same time.[1623.48][1623.48](Laughter) She can make senior posters for the senior night athletic event, laminate teacher signs, and make upset parents happy to wait when an administrator or counselor is busy. She can answer bus questions, procedure questions, student schedule questions, and the all-important "who is where at what time" questions. She is the school's first line of security, as she controls all of the buttons that open the lobby doors, doors into the main building, and the drawbridge. All of these tasks are essential for a safe and orderly school, but more importantly, she cares about Northwest Cabarrus students. It shows that she interacts with them throughout the day, whether it's finding appropriate clothes for dress code violations, making sure a student gets the lunch money a parent has dropped off, or helping them under- understand important life lessons even when they don't want to hear it. She is there for them, and that is priceless. She is an essential part of the huge success at Northwest Cabarrus High School. And Northwest Cabarrus High School is proud to recognize Mrs. Angie Taylor as an Impact Through Education Award recipient. Congratulations.[1691.57][1691.57](Applause)
All right. We're at Section 4.3, which is the Young Authors and Forever Young Authors State Winners. Dr. Sher O'Meara will come up with Dr. Tara Natress.
This evening, we are pleased to recognize the Cabarrus County Representatives who have been named winners in the North Carolina Young Authors Competition. The theme for this year's North Carolina Reading Association Young Authors Project was "Making the Most of Me." Authors were encouraged to write about defining choices that have shaped their lives or their own journeys toward becoming the very best version of themselves. Authors wrote prose, poetry, fiction, or nonfiction. And we have all of our elementary winners in front of us. I'm going to recognize them by calling your names, okay, so that we know who you are. We'll start with Beverly Hills, which was Desmond Monte. From Cox Mill, we have Ayush Paul- From Cox Mill, we have Ayush Paul. Bogart Elementary School, we have Emma Willis, Morgan Manship, as well as Elizabeth Hinson, who had a Judges' Choice Award. From Harrisburg, we have Campbell Poplar, as well as Helena Winterberg. Mount Pleasant, Grayson Almond, and Lawson Little, who was also one of the Judges' Choice Awards. R. Brown McAllister was Kate Bynum. Rocky River, Mackenzie Nun. Pitt School Road, we had Matthew Sterns and Morgan Gregory. And then from W.R. Odell, we had Paige Hairs. Hires. And if I've mispronounced anyone else's name, I tried really hard, all right? So if you want to go ahead and be recognized by the board after Mr. Martin takes your photograph, so hang out there for just a second. It is amazing what iPhones can do, isn't it? All right, are they ready?
They're ready.
All right, you may go ahead and be recognized by the board. Great job, guys.
Next, our middle and high school winners are entering the room. And I see that not all of them are here, although we'll call all of their names. When I call your name, would you step forward so we'll know who you are? From CC Griffin, we have Lily Williams. From Harold Winkler, Kaylee Collins. From J.N. Freeze Magnet, Abigail Jones. From J.N. Freeze Magnet, Chloe Bell. From J.N. Freeze Magnet, Jaden Duntley. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, Kason Gregory. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, Allison Ward, who's also a Judges' Choice Award winner. Congratulations to our middle school winners. As they're shaking hands, I'll announce the high school winner who couldn't be here tonight from Hickory Ridge, Sophia Palitas. And a Forever Young winner, our AIG teacher from Patriots Elementary, Jill Spencer. Congratulations to all of our Young Authors Award winners.
Next up will be Youth Art Month, our Superintendent's Choice Awards. Dr. Chris Lauder, Mrs. Grace Minnet, and Mrs. Ronnie Boone, if y'all will please come to the podium. Thank you, Commissioner Minnet, for showing up and gracing us with your presence.
I'd like to thank Dr. Lauder and Chairman Shoemaker and the school board for letting the Cabarrus County Education Foundation be a part of this presentation tonight. The Education Foundation has been involved in the Superintendent's Choice Art Awards since their inception. And I would like to especially thank Quinn Dionne, who is a teacher, art teacher at Concord High School, who coordinated the competition this year for Youth Art Month. And if you have an opportunity, any of you, to go downtown this month to the Cabarrus Art Guild and go see the 200 entries in Cabarrus Art Youth Month, I highly recommend that. Tonight, however, we're going to choose three youngsters who have received the Superintendent's Choice. And Dr. Lauder made these decisions, so let's present the first one. At pre-K elementary school level is Sebastian Castillo, a fifth grader from Wyancoff Elementary. His art teacher is Amy Henderson, and his watercolor is entitled "Birch Trees." Would Sebastian and Mrs. Henderson please come forward to be recognized? Our middle school choice award winner this year is Erin Bergeron, an eighth grader from Harold Winkler Middle School. And her piece is also a watercolor and is entitled "Spring in Bloom," and her teacher is Lori Earnhardt. I don't believe Erin is here this evening. And last but not least, our high school choice award winner is Isabel Liu, a 12th grader at Hickory Ridge High School. Her oil painting is entitled "Kevin," and her art teacher is Stephen Mitchum. Would Isabel and Mr. Mitchum please come forward? They're not here either, okay. As you can see, we have some sensational artists in our system, and there's many more downtown on display. Thank you for choosing them, Dr. Lauder.
May I have a second? I just wanted to make sure that we recognize Mrs. Quinn Dionne because she's here, and I thought she was going to come forward when we started, and she didn't. So she coordinated all of the Youth Art Month events and was instrumental in getting the show to be down at the Art Guild instead of here at the Ed Center where it has been for several years. So we just want to say thank you to you for doing that and giving our students an opportunity to have their work have more exposure. There you go.
We had the reception at the Davis Theater, and it was so crowded, we couldn't get everybody in. So a lot of that is because of Quinn and her making sure that everybody had access to that. So thanks a lot, Quinn, we appreciate it.
Our next item will be the North Carolina Governor's School, and Ms. Nicole Sandor will come forward.
Good evening. The Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically or intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. Ten Cabarrus County School High School students have been selected to attend the Governor's School of North Carolina Summer Program this year. We are here tonight to honor this accomplishment. I will now announce each student and their focus academic area. Up first, we have Landon Bossd. He is from Concord High School, and he will go in the area of Social Science. Esther Lynn is from Hickory Ridge High School. She will also attend in the area of Social Science. Melan Patel is from Central Cabarrus, and he will attend in the area of Natural Science. Hannah Ross Patton is from Concord High School. She will attend in the area of English. Tatiana Portell is from Mount Pleasant High School and will also attend in the area of English. Calista Sheriff is from JM Robinson High School and will attend in the area of Math. And Anderland Smith is from Hickory Ridge High School and will attend in the area of Theater. Congratulations, all of you, and enjoy your summer.
If Mr. Rusty Parker would come forward, we're going to be saluting the VEX Robotics State Champions.
Here they come. These are the state champions from JM Robinson High School. JM Robinson High School's VEX Robotics Team 5149A has now won their third consecutive state championship. The coaches are Daniel Peck and Dave Parisi. Team members are Cheryl Marie Anderson, Erin Bennett, Jason Ellisor, Andy England, Christopher Hegelke, Brendan Manigan, Omar Menefee, Owen Penninger, Jacob Pridmore, Jonathan Stead, Joseph Stiles, Jasmine Thompson, Brandon View, Matthew White, and Jared Yates. Congratulations.
All right. You've got to smile. No laughing, just smiling.
Dr. Cheryl Mylum and Mr. Ben Allred will be presenting the Band and Choral Outstanding Achievements.
Each spring, our Cabarrus County Schools Band and Choral Programs perform at the North Carolina Music Educators Association Music Performance Assessments. These events provide performance opportunities for students and directors that offer critical assessments of the quality of their performances by experts in band and choral education. The students perform prepared pieces and are scored by judges. Students are also required to sight-read, meaning they have seven minutes or less to study a piece and then play it by sight. They are given one of four ratings: superior, excellent, good, or fair. The following programs earned superior ratings. Our middle schools' band, CC Griffin Middle School, Drew Carter, Band Director. If you are from CC Griffin, please just step forward. One. From Harris Road Middle School, Laura Shepherd, Band Director. Please step forward. From Hickory Ridge Middle School, Andrew and Molly Blair, Band Directors. Step forward. We have students present. From J.N. Freeze Magnet School, Jason Partridge, Band Director. And from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, Alice Aldridge, Band Director. Our chorus representatives from Harris Road Middle School, Jody K. Skeen, Choral Director. Four 6th grade chorus, 7th grade intermediate chorus, women's chorus, and advanced mixed chorus, all superiors. Congratulations. If all of you will step forward once so they can get around the back. If all of you will step forward once so they can get around the back.
Go that way. After you shake, and go that way.
Okay. Well, now we'll represent our, present our high schools for both band and chorus as well. First, we have Central Cabarrus High School, under the direction of Tyler Stark, their Band Director. Symphonic Band received a Superior, Grade IV, and Concert Band received a Superior, Grade III. Concord High School, under the direction of Christopher Wilson, their Band Director. Symphonic Band, Superior, Grade IV. Cox Mill High School, under the direction of Joseph Erp, the Band Director. Wind Ensemble, Superior, Masterwork. Hickory Ridge High School, under the direction of Chris White. Wind Ensemble, Superior, Grade VI, and Symphonic Band, Superior, Grade IV. J.M. Robinson High School, under the direction of Blair Smith. Wind and Percussion Ensemble, Superior, Grade VI, and Concert Band, Superior, Grade III. Northwest Cabarrus High School, under the direction of Sam Bogan. Symphonic Band, Superior, Grade VI, and Concert Band, Superior, Grade IV. And now for Chorus. Central Cabarrus High School, under the direction of Ethan Price. Chamber Choir, Superior, Grade V. And J.M. Robinson, under the direction of Vivian Howard. Chorus, Superior, Grade IV. Congratulations to all of you.
But don't go anywhere.
Take one step forward. Actually, take two steps forward. Turn and look that way. Begin shaking hands.
We had, we had one quick omission going back to Governor's School, and we wanted to recognize that student because he's here. Yes, if you took the trouble to come down, we wanted to definitely recognize. This is Colin Whitley. Is that correct, Whitley? And he is going for vocal music for Governor's School, so we'd like to recognize you now.
Well, tonight is our night that we're going to adopt the proposed budget for 2016-17, and I just want to thank Ms. Klutz and all of the volunteers and staff members that participated in the budgeting process. It is a long process, takes a lot of time, a lot of preparation, and I, and I believe it is really a great opportunity for our public to get involved with it and to at least understand the complexities of, of our budgeting. We look forward to presenting this to our commissioners and anticipate that they will do everything they can to help us meet our needs and our, some of our wants, but maybe not all of them, but as we go forward. With that, as further ado, I'll turn this over to Dr. Louder and let him carry on with his comments.
Good evening. We're heading into the home stretch of the school year, and soon we'll be busy with end-of-the-year activities and testing. We want to remind everyone that schools need proctors to help with end-of-grade and end-of-course testing. If you're interested in volunteering, please contact one of our schools directly. We want to say congratulations to our Teacher of the Year finalists. There are five of them. Astrid Francis from Irvin Elementary School, Tina Platek from J.M. Robinson High School, Stephen Platt from J.N. Frees Magnet School, Chase Tinnell from Hickory Ridge Middle School, and Lori Tribble from Central Cabarrus High School. The District Teacher of the Year will be named during a celebration next month from one of these five finalists, so congratulations to them. The public is invited to the groundbreaking celebration for the new Royal Oaks Elementary School on Saturday, April 16th. That's this coming Saturday, from 5:00 to 7:00. They will have a celebration that will include an ice cream truck, a dance party, and fireworks, so please mark your calendars and make plans to attend. There will be two more opportunities for parents to register their children for kindergarten in Cabarrus County Schools this week. Families can register Tuesday at the Logan Community Center and Wednesday at the Boys and Girls Club. Registration both days is from 4:30 to 6:30. Preschool registration also continues this month through the 22nd. Appointments are required, so please call 704-784-3614 to schedule your appointment. You can find details about registration requirements on our district website. Click on the Kindergarten Registration or Preschool Registration icons on the right-hand side of the page. Report cards for third quarter were distributed today. This week, we celebrate National Assistant Principals Week. We appreciate the work of the assistant principals in our schools. Their administrative support and instructional leadership are integral to the success of the school and of all of our students. And last, we want to say, recently Cabarrus County was included in a new report published by the Public School Forum of North Carolina that indicated that student success is likely here in our county. They measured four things: health, youth behavior and safety, education, and economic development. We ranked in the top five of the, all the counties in the state of North Carolina, which just proves that this is a great place for a family and for young people to grow up. For more information about the report, please visit our district website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us.
Thank you, Dr. Louder. And Board members, I flipped my page and totally left out the approval of minutes, so if you'll help me, I will go back to the approval of minutes. We have three, four sets of minutes: the March 7th minutes, March 14th, the March 23rd Quarterly Meeting Minutes, and the March 23rd Budget Session Minutes. I will have to recuse myself from voting on the March 14th, March 23rd minutes of all those three minutes, but I'll vote on the March 7th minutes, since I was not here for those other three meetings. So Board members, I need, I would like to have a motion to approve these minutes. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Furr, is there any discussion or any corrections? I haven't heard any at this point. Hearing known. All in favor of approving the four sets of minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Then that motion carries 6-0. With my recusal on March 14th, March 23rd Quarterly, and March 23rd Budget. So that will be 5-0 on those three. Okay. That carries us to our guest speakers. We did have one guest speaker signed up for tonight, Reverend Roland Jordan, anticipated being here, but I don't see Reverend Jordan out in the audience, so he probably is not going to be able to come to us tonight. Speakers are able to speak with the board in accordance with Board Policy 2310 that was revised by the board on May 11th, 2015, and a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. Speakers must hand a completed card to the board clerk no later than 6:00 p.m., the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. The board chair will decide the time devoted to public comments. Speakers must complete the contact information, including their name, group name if applicable, address and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. The following individuals have been called in advance, and as I noted, Reverend Roland John, Jordan did not attend, but he did sign up. All right. Board members, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Dr. Phillips makes the motion. Mr. Harrison seconded that. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose. And that motion carries 6-0. On our action agenda, we will begin with the adoption of the proposed 2016-17 budget. Ms. Kelly Klutz will be coming to the podium, and she will be ready and able to answer any questions that you may have for her at this time. Board members, I turn this over to you to ask any other clarifying questions that you may have about the budget.
Thank you. The clock says I have three minutes. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Could be.
Okay. Therefore.
Might be a record.
Okay. Thanks. So I made the changes, the change that you requested last week. The presentation has only, there's only been that one change that's made. Otherwise, it's exactly like it was before you last Monday, and I'm just going to take you to the page where we made the change. So I'm on page 10, Operational Expansion, General Education. We moved number, was formerly number three to number one, and you can see Teacher Supplements is number one, and the other two items fell below that, and I believe that was the direction of the board. And I will take questions or concerns if you have any.
Board members, I don't see any need for questions. It would be nice to have a motion to propose, to adopt this proposed budget. Do I hear one?
Yes, sir. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Tim Furr makes the motion, and Mr. Harrison seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of the budget?
Oh, one quick, again, we're asking for like 20% increase. We don't expect to get the 20% increase, so it's really a list of needs.
Yes, we've identified our needs, and we're presenting those to the county. That's what makes it proposed.
I just want to make that clear.
Yes. All right. So we're ready to vote now? Any other comments? All right. Board members, all in favor of the proposed 2016-17 budget that we'll present to the commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 6-0.
I think it was close to three minutes, just for the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, for the record.
Board members, we're now looking at the Royal Oaks Elementary School. The construction bid alternate, and Mr. Louder, Tim Louder, if he would come forward.
As you're aware, we discussed this item at length, to whom we awarded the contract a month and a half ago, but obviously, we've had some additional discussions with Cabarrus County. The funding is available should you wish to award this as an alternate for these solar panels at Royal Oaks. It does have about a 17-year payback directly, but then it has a four-year life cycle, so basically I have 23 years' worth of generating electricity beyond the actual life cycle. It has a 25-year warranty on the panels, and the present worth built into the project is about $1.1 million. So as you can see, it is a viable project from that standpoint. It does not have a 10-year payback. It was talked about at the first thing, but it does have a very substantial payback. So at this point in time, we would recommend award as the funds are available.
Board members, I turn this over to you for questions.
I was just going to move to approve.
All right. Well, Dr. Phillips makes the move to approve. Mr. Furr seconds that. Any more discussion on this topic? All right. Board members, all in favor of the motion as noted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries 6-0. So we have now accepted that other bid alternate. Thank you, sir. Board members, we now have our final item, which is the resolution cautioning Mr. Vince Powell regarding future conduct. You can follow this into the, in the agenda, but I'll read this resolution of caution. Whereas Mr. Vince, Mr. Vince Powell has been a valued member of the Cabarrus County Board of Education since December 2014, whereas our role as school board members requires us from time to time to serve as judges in grievance hearings on disputes between the Cabarrus County Schools Administration and employees, parents, or students in Policy 1010, whereas in that role, we are obligated to come to the hearings with open minds and not as advocates for one side or the other. Whereas Board Policy 2120 requires board members avoid allowing personal relationships and biases to influence decision-making, whereas Board Policy 2342 requires members to refrain from voting on matters when they cannot be impartial, whereas fulfilling that obligation is often difficult, especially when a party to a dispute has come to us to raise their concern and seek our advice, and whereas emails written by Mr. Powell imply that Mr. Powell could, would participate in a hearing and an employee's appeal after having decided that that employee's claim had merit. We therefore resolve, therefore hereby resolve, that other members of the Cabarrus County Board of Education look forward to Mr. Powell's continued service on our board as his input helps us collectively to make better decisions, that Mr. Powell should follow Board Policy 2122 and the Code of Ethics by refraining from personally investigating a complaint and instead referring any and all complaints to the superintendent or his designee, that Mr. Powell should seek advice from the board attorney in situations in which he finds board policy unclear or contradictory, that Mr. Powell should exercise due caution when assisting anyone in raising an issue with the superintendent or his designee which could ultimately come to a grievance hearing, that Mr. Powell should refrain from participating in a grievance or appeal hearing if he has made a decision in advance of the hearing, or if he cannot render an unbiased judgment due to personal friendship, past working relationships, or his previous knowledge of one party's case in the dispute. Board members, we have this resolution before you, and there's a need for a motion to carry on. on. Mr. Harrison moves to adopt the resolution, and Dr. Phillips seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call a vote. All in favor of this motion of adopting the resolution as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And Mr. Powell, did you vote? Okay.
I voted aye, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I couldn't hear. Thank you, sir. All right.
I will say that I've enjoyed working for the Board, working for the teachers, parents, students of the district, working on the Board, and I look forward to continuing to help employees and staff members and parents and students as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Board members, we now call for motions to approve the April 11th Personnel List. I believe you have that in a folder before you. Do I have a motion? All right, so Mr. Fur voted, moved, excuse me, Mr. Fur moved to, for the motion, and Mr. Walter seconded that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the Personnel List as noted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Then that motion carries 6-0. Board members, I now call for a motion to adjourn. David Harrison makes the motion. Do I have a second? Oh, Tim Fur makes the second. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries 6-0. This meeting is adjourned.